And I will do our opening ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have a thought that we're grateful for the opportunity we have together. Together, we're grateful for our city, for the wonderful place that we live, and for the wonderful neighbors that we have. We're grateful that we can work together as a city and as a planning commission to make decisions that will best impact our city now and into the future. And help us understand how we can make decisions that will affect that goal. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. All right, Haley will do our roll call now.
Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Mark Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Heidi Murdoch.
Here.
Commissioner Justin A.
Here.
Chairman Kevin Folsom.
Here. All right, thank you. So move on to the public comments. I think we have perhaps one public comment. Are you, I assume you're Tyler?
I am, yeah. I'm for a presentation.
Okay, so you've got a presentation. So unless you also have a separate public comment.
I don't have a public comment.
Okay, so we will proceed now to our presentation. And Tyler, appreciate you kind of by now. You sent me an email, you've been attached with the city. And so can you give some thoughts on coordinates, correct?
Yeah, and I'll come up here.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Yeah, I just personally, the, so my side line, I live on the fourth South Blueway. I have four. Ten years. Well, that would be, I would be. The last we did. But. My wife and I can't be, like, to build a pool. Our backyard is our, our home. As such, one of the setbacks, we wanted to build a pool in that setback. In order to build anything that is worth building, I would need for ordinance to demonstrate how beautiful that is. So I've been in contact with Jeff and Eric and a few of the city council and community boards about how it costs to open a pool where I want it. And what has resulted is I have a proposal to amend the ordinance. And I've got the amendment that I sent. But I think you guys can probably see. I just got a copy of the ordinance asset is in its status on the website. It's still sort of this template, and both have been amended to each. But my proposal is to go to three people. From the property line. This is. Which is basically, which is the International Building Code and International Swimming Pool Act stock code. Which doesn't, neither the International Building Code nor these swimming pools stock codes talk anything about property rights. They just talk about how to construct a pool property, which I'm just talking about. But the International Building Code and the Swimming Pools refers to the International Swimming Pool Act stock code. And that one does talk about barriers for safety of swimming pools. And how I think we, how we need to run. But the one thing that they do talk about in their barrier code is that they can be through feet from the outside of the water barrier closing at the end of it. So that's why I'm proposing the ordinance match. This behind the sea and International Swimming Pool Act stock code.
Tyler, when you chose on that site plan, you know, what your impediments are as far as like, why you could move your pool closer to your house and increase that setback a little bit? What have you got going on?
Right, my backyard, these are my decked floors. And deck extends to this gray line, which is my, also my happy room. That's already the old layer, that's, that's all existing. Yeah, okay. And my home at its closest point, which is this, sits twenty feet from that property. For that, that's, that's the way we design it.
So you've got a tiny backyard.
I've got a, I've got a small backyard. And we, I don't think it's that narrow, right? It's my niece, that's my wife's. But, but it, that is, that is, it's, and this is, it's not unique to my home. There are many, there are many homes that meet this. That are, I had a shower, or, or your shower, especially in, 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 I think the streets here, for the, for the region building this. And those are their, their zone of the law, so to speak. But the ordinance set is written, is eight feet. Which would mean I would have an eight foot dead space and a six foot pipe.
What are you showing on this plan?
What's that? That is three feet, that's three, that's two feet from the property.
We would require another five feet. And, and what, what is the size of that pool right now as you're showing?
That's a fifteen by five point.
If you had to cut another five feet off, it would be ten. It would be ten feet wide.
And then I would have an eight foot.
That's almost a lot of pool.
Yes, 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 it's a lot. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be out until we were on.
And remind me again, what, what is going on with the property, right? Your backyard neighbor? What, what's the situation on there a lot? Is there a house right there?
Yeah, there is a house. It's, the closest point of his house is approximately fifty feet from my property. His house sits, so this is forty feet. So his house, the closest point of his house, and it sits sort of, sort of this direction.
There's a driveway.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, and it's got a huge front yard. It's, it's almost an eight foot lawn. And he stepped back quite a way. He stepped back very far from, not only from Green Road, but also from, from this corner. So at least, but the closest point of his house is sitting.
So Tyler?
Yes.
So this Green Road actually continues down that way, right?
So yeah, this is, this is East.
Okay.
And this is West, but it continues down to Highway North.
Right.
And up to. So in, in this city, there is actually precedent for this. I know that the Williams, the front R one, the Green Law Road have a pool that was set five feet last year. And I don't know if that was before or after the ordinance passed. But I know they have the variance, so their pool at five feet. The cost of this, who also lived on our, on my house, their pool was constructed, I know of the wealth of the service. Their pool is also constructed through. So it's, this has been done before. But.
And Derek, I don't think anybody's got a variance, right? Nobody's got a variance, so.
So he's there.
There may be some rules that have been, I don't know, what was the ordinance with before we went to, when we got there?
The first one was twenty twenty-two, right, October twenty-two?
Yeah, it was twenty-two, it was ten.
What was it before ten?
Was it really addressed?
I thought it was, there was a, it was six feet.
So we went from six to ten, and now we're eight. So we hopped around a little bit on this thing. And it, and it's been because of, you know, different pool problems. I don't remember exactly how we arrived, we got to eight. I don't know.
We went to, we went to eight to make sure that the, that the ability to build a sidewalk, that was wide enough to comply with eighty, eighty, thirty, five, nine, four. All the laws required and stuff like that, it's the minimum. Of a certain width of sidewalk or deck, I don't know what you call it, sidewalk or not pool.
Whatever they got.
Yeah.
Also, the IBC didn't say anything with that. What's that? I believe the IBC and the ISP, SC, neither of them talked about ADA access. That's public access. So there's, looking at the state, anything other than this is, the variance will have three feet of them.
I know we looked into what some other cities were doing. Where we had aligned some of those things.
Just right with that pretty much. I think waiting is six feet. Or my mind believes eight, okay, a little over eight. So we matched up with those surrounding communities. Also because of pool builders. Trying to match up with, well, what's the layout here.
All right, I got what I held up from back then, when we were doing it. So bound full six feet. Ogden, at least five feet around perimeter. Five feet from property line, Woods Cross. Maybe a lot, huh? Just a couple of my notes, someone who were dealing with this, first time around.
So Tyler, I'm, I'm not aware that anybody's been granted a variance for a pool setback.
People claim for variance.
If people either built their pools with the pool, with the setback was a different setback, or they've somehow pulled the pool over the city's eyes and did something without our knowledge.
I, I asked someone from Williams, I don't know, one of them, isn't he used to do that though? They did say that they got the local system.
Yeah. Nobody's been granted a variance that I'm aware of. There, that, that, that's a, that's a specific process you have to go through. And I don't think that these kind of things would ever qualify for a variance. Under the law, but that doesn't mean that people don't get away with things once in a while. You know, garages and things don't always get put in the right place. I don't know, but.
How does, just like, I don't know. How does it work? Somebody applies for variance, I don't think it qualifies under the law.
There's specific conditions that have to be met to be granted a variance. And, and the main ones, the, the one, there's, there's a whole list of things, but the main ones are that it can't be self-imposed. And, and it can't be, you can't claim an economic, hard claim that there's an economic hardship. And to be granted a variance, you've got to show that the ordinance applied to you, that your situation is so unique that the ordinance applied to you creates a unique situation that exists nowhere else in the city. So if the ordinance is evenly applied, you've got a situation that is unlike anybody else. It, it's very hard, it's very difficult. It's only happened one time that I'm aware in probably twenty-five or thirty years in this city. We, we granted a guy a variance to build a shed. He bought a piece of property next door to him and built a shed on it. It was a vacant building lot that could not be built on because there was a fault right around it, right through the middle of it. And that was discovered after the subdivision was planned. So the lot could never be used for anything else. So he got a variance and he could build a garage on it. He owned, his home was right next to it. That's the only time I've, and, and that's a unique situation.
So the five, so the five things are literal enforcement of law. Miami's ordinance would cause unreasonable hardship. That is not necessary to carry out a general purpose. There are special circumstances attached to property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same district. Granting a variance is essential to the enjoyment of substantial property where it is possessed by other property in the same zone. Variance will not substantially affect the general plan or not contrary to public interest. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. Yeah, right on with what you're saying. I, I mean, the, the, the unique thing here is you don't have like a true backdoor neighbor with like a house right behind you. That is a unique situation. The concern I have is if they sell and subdivide that lot, you could easily change that quick. And I, I think, you know, speaking from when we first talked about this in October twenty twenty-two, the, the concern with the distance is as much about kind of the topography, you know, this, and you have a pretty flat backyard from what I can tell. A lot of creeping on you from Google Maps here. So I, you know, in, in some ways, like, we do have a kind of a unique situation. I, I would be very hesitant most of the time, I think, to want to grant variance like this. Yours is, in my book, is kind of a unique situation where you just, you doesn't have the threat of someone behind him that can be impacted. How close would it be to your neighbors immediately? Yeah.
Right there, it's, it's fifteen feet.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, that, that makes me like, that, that would make me feel a little bit more comfortable. But I, I, I think my hesitance more would be what could happen with that lot behind you in the future as far as, because it's, it's a big lot, I think I see with how many people are repurposing their lots or showing it, some of them are redeveloping that. That would be my one concern is what could happen there in the future.
That would, could happen, granted, they would know the existing condition of the lot.
Okay. That's, that's very clear.
Well, they, they would, but but what Tyler is proposing is that we consider changing our ordinance.
Yeah, changing all the variants. I, I would say, I, I'm not comfortable changing it, but I would be comfortable considering a variance in this circumstance with some thought and discussion and feedback.
I think he's gonna run into. It, it's self-imposed to have a pool. He, he doesn't. I mean, he doesn't need a swimming pool to enjoy a, a, a property, right? Just the fact that you can't build a swimming pool on your property is not a reason. That, that, that's a self-imposed reason. And, and I don't think he's gonna win on that. I, I think his option is much more, is, is much more likely to try and get the ordinance changed.
Is there a way, like, my fear with changing any of these, I get this situation, there are lots like that, right? That has any grade on it. Like, if you plot, like, change ordinance for any lot that has some grade near it, like, that is what scares me, it's a region, but I don't agree with you. Your lot is zero grade, smaller than this, and I don't know how specifically I have to give it to straight across the board, say, do you think for everybody? I, I don't love that, like, if your lots small, like, they're, I, I don't know. You're limited, and there's no grade, and someone's not looking fifteen feet on the neighborhood property, I just, I don't know.
It, it turns into, to, you know, start writing exceptions because there's no way to.
Not a exception, just like, don't let the, the current ordinance be separated out or whatever.
Either change, wholesale change across the board or you don't do anything. Because there's no, there, there's, there, there's a hundred exceptions that we don't even know about today. You, you could sit and rewrite ordinance and stuff. The, the, the bottom line is, is that whether it's eight feet, or five feet, or three feet, it, it's whatever the city's comfortable with. I, i- if there's no code that dictates one, one over another, it's just, what are you comfortable with? Where are you comfortable with, with, with a setback? And we've already changed it three times.
Yeah. We keep changing. Two months ago, I went and did some research on this, because, you know, I always fall back to safety. What are the safety things that come up? And I didn't really find much on safety. I mean, talking about wills pool fail or affect the property line? There doesn't seem to be much that I could find where that has happened, that, that that's been a concern. Uh, the, the three feet walking area? I mean, they are putting pools in small places, so. You know, I, I was looking at safety, I was looking at, how much does it affect the neighbor behind them? And, and if there's a house right behind them, and it's twenty feet, and it's three feet to the fence, that's fairly close, but I, I, I guess I've never had that experience. I've got chickens behind my fence, and we've talked about that over and over again, and they don't bug me. But, um, so I think, those would be my biggest two concerns are, are safety and, uh, impact to, to neighbors. And I, the safety thing, I really couldn't find anything. And if somebody can't find something, you know, where to consider that. But I didn't find anything that people think that that's a, and I've been in hotels where they have three feet around the, the pool.
I guess the concern for me about three feet is, like, you have to get beyond where that four foot is, right? So if you're three feet and you're digging behind it, you are like right on your neighbor's property, right? And they have, so you're pretty close if they've got trees, if there's any grade movement. If this, you just don't want to get in a situation where you're affecting anything going on on your neighbor's property. But I, I don't think, I just think that's it's, maybe I'm wrong, I'm, I'm sorry. But I just know they have to dig behind it, and then that, and right, that's a two more feet, is that correct? The school walls are foot wide, and you're, you're at least eighteen inches behind it, and they've got to get all their ones and everything there, and then they fill it in, and so.
I think kind of.
I don't, I think, again, my issue is just if it was ready.
Yeah, I can see, if you're, if it's stock foundation, you're gonna need the other three feet to dig. But I think, I know there's different ways to construct a pool. And if they gunite them in, actually spread against their wall, I believe.
I am not, I'm an engineer, not a contractor. I grew up in a home that had a pool. But it was probably about that, about three feet. We actually had a building that would water poke through, it was manmade concrete. And the neighbor behind us, it didn't matter. We, granted, but I think concrete is a good point about, you know, neighbors. I think whether it's a pool, whether it's grass, a little bit of a bad spray, as far as like, the neighbors too much. As long as it doesn't get a noise, right? I think we consider not noise. A jungle gym or.
My kids have swing in the back, there's a exterminator hanging in my house.
Uh, I, I think as long as it just doesn't set to your pocket, it doesn't approach them, right? He's both correct.
So when you pass someone, or you're changing, you don't have control of that, which you change it, it's just it's out there, right? I just don't want to see the city there, and so I, why do you put stuff or some? Um, I mean, I don't want to see it happen.
I see your concern.
Derek, are there other, are there other homeowners that are asking about pool stuff?
No, I, I, no, not right now.
Let me go back to the variance issue. To seek a variance, wouldn't we be the first hearing body for that?
No, there's a, there's a, it, it's a separate body.
Is it like, is that like, what level is that at?
More of adjustment. So that, I don't even know, we may have to call more of adjustment anew, and it's been so long since they met. But, um, you, you file a, a variance and put forth your, your issues, and then staff is supposed to analyze it based on the law. And then he goes, what, for the board of adjustment, and states his case, and then will decide what to do.
I see what you're saying now. You, you were talking about unreasonable hardship, these refers to difficulty in complying with zoning ordinance. Because of circumstances unique to property, the hardship must relate to the property, not to conditions general for the area. Hardship may not be self-imposed or solely economic. Variance is not necessary if compliance is possible, even if the property owner has to alter desired plans.
I, I just don't know how, I just don't know how you're gonna get past this idea. Building a pool is a decision you make, that's self-imposed. You don't have to build a pool. You, you would like to have a pool, but you're not gonna get past this idea that you're, that's self-imposed. You don't need that pool to enjoy your, to own and live at home and enjoy your property. It, it's a, it's a nice, I don't know how you're gonna pierce through that.
I do think you have a variance, that, that would be the hard one, is that last line, that a variance is not necessary if compliance is possible, even if the property has to alter desired plans. That's probably what they would throw in your face at the, at that adjustment level. Maybe I, so, so the last time we, well, the first time we dealt with this in October twenty twenty-two, we looked at a lot of the local ordinances. I can't remember seeing one that, that short of a distance. I mean, I, if, if, if there are examples, I'd be happy to look at them. I, I would be concerned of changing the whole ordinance. I do, I do think you have a more unique situation, given your back neighbors are not so close.
If you're super certain of not getting back to your.
But I, I just worry about it being a widespread thing, given that we're now creating more and more smaller lots in our community where I could see, you know, if you have people back to back having just all these pools just buttting up against you. I grew up in Houston, that's where, when you get all the rain coming in, it's gonna hit that pool, and wherever is nearby, that's gonna get exposed. And, you know, we, we don't live in Houston, obviously, we don't have that same exposure to, to the water, flooding risk, but that happens, and that, that makes me a little nervous.
So just could you modify the ordinance to say that it's whatever distance you're comfortable with, you can go down and create all the other conditions in the ordinance for that point of view from the structure and I mean, all of the other conditions about the ordinance?
We, we could write, we, we could write any number of exceptions that allow you to move forward. I, I think the danger in that is, is that that there's a dozen people behind you that would like an exception for something. And, and you can go down this exception road to the.
Well, you would make that unless you're comfortable with providing the exceptions in the case where people actually want it. And meet all of them. So if you're not, if you're not comfortable with them being a three feet and being all covered, then don't change it. But if you are, and in this case it would allow it, or in cases that also meet all of the other stipulations of the ordinance, then you'd be okay with it. I'm not asking for an exception for anybody that, where, where they're asking for exceptions for all of the rest that are covered. They still have to meet the rest of them. But it'll allow the city to grant a three foot setback on a pool where, and still are infrastructures applying that safety and the barrier. What's those five feet? Um, we have, still be an arrow pool, it's still got kind of a, a dead zone to be here. That would probably make me go to my, go to kite and ask him for two feet. You apply the amendment, adjust that lot line with him. Keep the fence there and still build a two feet, but it probably doesn't matter.
Seems like, as we look around, a small setback, five feet.
Yeah. If you wanna make it five feet, so if you wanna make it five feet, I would go to jet kite, and I would ask him for two feet of this property. I would keep everything the same, keep my fence in the same spot. I wouldn't take property from him for use on, on my part. I would, I would just build this. But I would meet the ordinance, I would meet your money. But it costs him twenty thousand dollars to do that, and nothing materially will change.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know, I mean, these things are not easy. And we've been fiddling around with it.
The only thing that that would change is if that is developed in the future, then the development would be back two more feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that will, not really, not really, because that would be part of that property. That would be mine, that the lot might be adjusted.
You, you would with your fence.
I wouldn't with my fence.
Yes, but you say that it's developed in the future.
Yes.
I would modify the property to, to make it a property.
Once, once they develop, yes, you.
Well, we don't, we don't know if they, they know the conditions for the property they want to buy, so.
Yes.
And again, being devil's advocate, you also need the conditions of your property. Any ordinance was different when I lived here. But it was also further, right? It was further than three feet.
Well, at the time, I was, when I asked about it, the manager of the town six years ago was like, he was like,
he told you it was three feet?
No, he said he would allow it to go with three. He would approve the plan and allow the pool to be structured, just like the houses.
Um, I don't know, that was two thousand dollars.
But I, I don't make any claim as to what people do. All I'm saying is the fact is we have people in the city that have built under similar conditions that are setbacked and they, and the city was aware of. Now, the orders that folks, you know, from the costless, they're like eleven or three, people go on a field trip.
What, what you're saying is.
Longwood. Yeah, Longwood and then, um, Williams, how, how five feet.
What you're saying is that you could buy property from your neighbor and meet the letter of the law, but it doesn't materially change anything?
It doesn't change anything. But it's, I, I would have to negotiate with my neighbor, compensate him for that property. Just to meet the code, functionally, that may exist.
Yeah.
So I don't go to any sense.
Now, most people, most people would not have the ability or there would not be a property, defined property for a neighbor. So that's the weakness of your situation, you might allow that.
Right.
Has he, have you approached him without anything in this order? You don't, you don't know if he would do that?
I don't know if he would do that.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I just don't really have an opinion one way or the other on this thing. It's not like this isn't like something that's gonna, you know, cause the sun not to come up tomorrow. I mean, it's kind of like a feel-good thing. We, we, we always try and not, try to not, as a small city, not be terribly out of compliance with what other cities are doing. They've learned a lot more lessons over a longer period of time than we have and you try and stay in the, you know, in a bubble. Now, we could go out and ask the city, the Oakland city, why is your ordinance five feet and not ten, right? And, and we may get some answers. We could do some research that along those lines, but I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know what, what's really difference between, they were talking about three, four, five feet here. What, what, what materially changes in that? Um, I, originally, I remember, you know, some years back, there, that one of the safety concerns in the building code, it sounds like that's not there now, was that if a kid jumped over a fence or climbed over a fence and couldn't fall on pool ground accidentally, that, that probably, whether that's three feet or five feet or eight feet, that's probably enough to satisfy that.
I think that's why the ISPSC is not good with that three foot. Okay.
And you're not gonna be able to launch here in that three feet and let people walk around and just.
Well, I would have three other sides, but I don't want people to see me around it. It's the city, it's the only way I can, can do it.
No, no.
As long as you don't put chicken, just kidding.
Yeah. As long as, as long as you keep your swimsuit on. Um, I mean.
We'll never know.
I, I'd be curious if we can identify any other cities that have that when they have a setback and determine maybe some of the rationale, because I know when, when we first were dealing with the, what was it? We had ten feet and people wanted fifteen feet. Remember, we, we did have pushback from neighbors of someone who's gonna go to a pool.
And a ten feet. And, and I, and I think, well, the pushback was that 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 was, that needed to be ten feet, right?
They wanted another.
Or fifteen. And, and that was a noise, that was a noise. They were saying that's too close to my property.
Well, they definitely need one, because it's a, it's a, a corner house and so the homes are, are different than you're usually expecting when you have like back-to-back neighbors. It was kind of a, a corner lot situation. It's in my neighborhood, so I know exactly where it is. It was, I remember there was some great frustration from those folks about less than fifteen feet. And it became unpopular for a little couple of weeks.
Were they complaining about the noise?
I think, uh, I can't remember exactly what all the details were of the plans and what.
I, I don't care if you're three feet or fifteen feet. Say pools, you're gonna hear some people splash out playing at it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you think that's a girl.
Right.
I don't think it comes with a certain level of noise.
Right.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it takes equal means to change as best I can, right? That's not me. I could have a basketball court or a field ball court. And it can just as noisy. I could have a, a party in my backyard. A movie night with my screaming teenagers and making noise at that pool.
Your, your basketball court, which does need, needs no setback. It can be right again to right. It could be everything is noisy, it's a suit.
And my ball can move over. And my racket can move.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what I'll take.
I don't see this, so when I put a setback, because of, I mean, noise is always the same happening when you have a bracket. For me, I think it's like water created, where's that water available with your feet here? I don't know. It's, it's just an amount goes over there and floods in your property and just the actual construction of the pool. Where the three foot setback.
To this point though, we do already have, it shall not be less than twenty feet from any areas to welcome. Um, just to your point on that, um.
Uh, so for safety, so that there is in the ISPSC ways to drain pools and they are trained for pool work.
Yeah, I know, why don't we got any ordinance is what I'm saying.
It's not an ordinance, but it is in the, in the ISPSC, which that's what I kind of argue with the city. Is that we have these building standards, potential gold construction, both for safety and crossing the barriers. And that's what I'm considering with the condition.
And, and what you were saying, Tyler, is that could the ordinance be driven in a way that give flexibility to the setback as long as it didn't pinch on the other requirements of that code, which is like twenty feet to the neighbor's house? Some of those are lesser. Eric, when you looked at some of these other cities, did you go into detail on why they were at that, where they were at?
When we went to eight, it was just kind of in between where everybody, I mean, you know, eight, I think was at six. And some of the other cities, I mean, I'm just thinking, Ohio was at ten feet. I circled through those different states. And just talking with the planning commission and council. Eight, eight feet was where, I mean, that they could come to an agreement. The council, I think, if I remember, had the planning commission recommended eight feet to the city council and the city councils when they came back. First time I said, no, it's minimum should be ten feet.
Maybe we even write that it says, I can't remember.
Yeah, I can't remember. But it was a different recommendation coming from the planning commission. I mean, and the council was the one that, um, said, no, we're, we're gonna go this far. I, I did the similar research of, of setbacks on pools and none of them have ordinance that's a strict, it's a maximum or conditions meeting, they all do have setbacks. I found the same things. You know, the one that was interesting to me was St. George. I will not inherently buy a, I don't have that accent difference. They have a setback to see. So that's one city that I could, that didn't have that high of a reason.
These are a lot of. Did you go any further into that search into trying to determine why?
I did, and there's nothing really that, I think most of it is just what people don't.
I, I think that, that's what I was surprised is that it, it's been this way for a long time.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, you know, yeah, actually, you cut, you cut the ends off the handle. So people just do it, the reality ends of the handle cut off because of the handle. Someone, they go back in the street. I, I, sorry, I said.
No, good reference.
Anyway, I was gonna, I was gonna go down.
Yeah, good reference.
It's just what people, uh, what people don't. But as far as, I, I see the, the ISPSC and the ISPSC as the codes that are written in order to maintain safety and survivability. That's the way that I see those codes. And when, and that, it'll say anything else only and there aren't any valid reasons to not, to not go to the I, that those, those codes are your setbacks. But with a pool, I think that it shouldn't be treated as a different use on my property than any other use that I can make on my property. And I think, but it's not basketball court. I'm not going to put my wall on my property line. I am going to meet the ISPSC at three feet. Because that code has been studied and written for safety. So that's in towards.
Does it say three feet?
It says three feet and then it's running outside of the wall.
I mean, Kevin, we, we'd be willing to take a look at some of these other city ordinances and talk to some people and see if there's some some valid reasoning behind these setback numbers. I suspect we're not gonna get a lot. I, I suspect that this is just the way they've done business for quite some time.
The way they felt when they made the ordinance?
I mean, setbacks would come into in, into play over a longer period of time and you learn lessons. Setbacks are not pulled out in years. There was a reason behind it. I just don't know, I don't know enough about swimming pools. Now, why is there setback to a swimming pool or property? I just don't. I mean, there's obviously some safety issue beyond that. I don't know what else there is.
And setback to largely most questions. What, what three, five foot pool to the, the hall? The requirements of that.
How is it supposed to be to the hall?
Six feet. Oh, you mean from another neighbor's pool, is that real?
No, I'm talking about. If I go one, I back to whoever's.
This is this is.
Six feet, yeah. Is that what it is? And the only thing.
Five, six feet.
Cause there's a pool going up right behind me and it just looks, my, my problem is that if it's greater than the requirements of the, that is, that would make sense. Just what I've seen, there's a behind me.
The ISPSC states two feet. That's what they had to say.
What is the city?
For three feet from the house, two feet from the house. Only two from a, from an adjacent structure at all.
So you can literally step out your back door into the pool?
That, that's what, so the pool behind me is, or it's on the other side of the street. Their backyard, waste of money or across the street and it looks like that.
If I was a homeowner and had kids, I'd be more concerned about how close my pool was to my house than I would be my fence. I mean, that seems like more of a, an issue with little kids being able to accidentally fall in the pool.
I don't know the pool owner, but they did state that there are only three, a lot of that would be.
But Derek, we require six.
We do a six feet.
That, that seems like a lot. In my mind, that is the most bigger issue than back beds is that there's a a, a decent distance between your back door and that pool.
Yeah, I was just trying to read, I couldn't find it. I did find it on the city website from the two thousand and six. The state said the, um, may not be posted before time of course, private terminals. It may not be posted four feet to the property line of the property, which is a little bit. But this is from two thousand and six. I'm assuming that it was four feet back then.
We'd, we'd be willing to do a little more research on this and see if we can uh, find anything, um.
If you wanna send some stuff, like the St. George and stuff you found and.
Yeah, why does St. George have a zero setback?
Well, it is a zero, it doesn't have a setback.
Things don't, things don't list.
No, no, I've seen, I have been down there and seen properties that have charges from the property line to the pool. I have seen that. Oh, it's.
I have a point. I think the thing to consider is that in this day and age, we're dealing with smaller and smaller law vessel. And, and so this is likely going to be a thing that we're going to deal with probably again. And I don't know what the right number is, but this is probably gonna be, this is probably gonna come up again.
I would assume that's maybe it's two or three, we're gonna see more requests over time. Seems like it's becoming more of a request.
One thing that I is, so this is not on our agenda to, to take action tonight. Right. So we, we will have some time to, to consider this. Well, to Heidi's point, I would really like to know how, how much you have to excavate behind the pool with the, the current construction methods.
Like if you're doing a ten foot pool and you're digging out, you are going right on your neighbor's property, going ten feet down and then.
It's going to end in a three feet.
Yeah, so you're right with property line. I mean, my pool is eleven feet.
Because it gave you forms in there.
Yeah, so you're.
The little forms on yours?
Yes, I mean, they have kind of form levels. Yeah, and then they, it's a lot, like you're, I just think that means the city, for me, like just think that you're the neighbor and someone's on your property and I go eleven feet down, twelve feet with this mat underneath. You're like, um, like, and pool feet went on those efficient even. So that pool could sit there for months, just mugs and.
You're right.
It's all under, I mean, like, it's just, is what it is and it re-fills to post. I, I think by anything that leads a few feet during the construction process of lines here, I'm sure my pool back there in the rain is probably finding there are any issues that undoubtedly not four hole open here. A year, a year and a half. It happens all the time with this. Where I just look, seem a little scared to me.
Well, if, if a contractor needs more room, I could certainly ask my neighbor to, or get him sure. But I was told by a pool contractor that I spoke to that that could be designed. But I, I think that setback is mitigated by by the fact that it's the liability of the contract and me, resident, to face any damage that I cost time for, for judging what is three feet, what is six. I could have a backhoe sweeping into the fence and ruin his fence or ruin his tree, knock a tree down or knock his, his house doors running down. I mean, that's uh, I mean, there are always risks to construction.
There are laws against like loudly digging out all the way through the area, but there's laws on the boats that prohibit it from. So that might here just with a three foot, anyone can do it, because we're not saying I'm beating you or, I mean, it's just, there's no regulation on it. It's passive, someone can dig down there. I mean, the city is liable in that case, if, if their ordinance allows the neighbor's property to be exposed and there is damage to it, if it does, that's just in nature what happened. Then sure, all contractors have their intention with some of the neighbors, but I mean, there's ordinance for these specific gains to protect cities and neighbors who have issues that can arise of my.
I don't, I don't know that that's the city at risk.
If they, if their ordinance allows for someone to dig to the property, I mean, twelve feet down and there's ordinance and there's laws that don't allow you to like loudly take it or nothing.
Do we have that allowing on our?
It's state.
It's a state law. You can't dig your property on that?
Well, it's just, um, it's a lateral something where you're, you're digging down from your neighbor's property and leaves their property kind of at risk.
Is that for construction of something permanent or structure or is that?
Just.
Is that to, to leave it open?
I mean, I would take it with law, let me research tomorrow. I mean, I can't agree with law, let me research tomorrow.
Is that, is that to leave it open?
No, just not to be open, I mean.
You can't excavate within a certain.
Well, it's just you can sue someone if they take the dirt off from the side of the property and.
Well, you're constructing on the lot that side of the property. Maybe actually be struggling on, okay, it's not for.
No, they're, they're taking off the dirt, the support of their property. I mean, there's, there's, there's lots of reasons.
But if I can shore that, that would be a risk, right? They're constructing that this is.
If you shore that, it's going to be way cheaper if I just be there making the property and shore the property when it's in construction.
But one's a possibility, but certainly one's a possibility.
I mean.
And I'm just saying that there are ways around that.
There are, but again, I just think there's no regulating. When she passed a, an ordinance, there's, she passed it, it's on the books, you know, hard time regulating all these different circumstances and issues, so to protect yourself, you just, that's probably why every city's setback is five, six, or ten feet.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like if there's a lottery and, and there is a way to regulate it, that, that is a good policy. And then for that reason.
If people can sue, so the.
Well, people can sue rent. I mean.
Well, they can sue when, in those cases, see. So I'm just, I'm just telling you my opinion.
I just.
Probably would never put three feet because I just think during the construction process, there's a lot of issues and I think that's the most, I mean, well, I think a lot of them, so it's, it's risky. I think it's really, I think it's just, you know, it's a serious agenda. Just something.
I'd be, I'd be open to kind of more research on it. Cause I, I do know that we did get pushed back even like the larger surroundings, but I, I'd be curious to, to get some more feedback about what other cities are doing, see if we can figure out what their experiences have been. And especially if there's any cities who have increased instead of decreasing.
I, I can commit to that. Do some research to see if we can find something that maybe helps us make some decisions.
Right.
On the, just city view mountain, they went as a five feet. But they also included, I don't know what it states, but they included the requirement that any structure, anything you call that international swimming pool. So whatever that says, those reference, they included that in there.
Um, so a, any other thoughts, um, as far as moving forward? Again, I, I think I'm, I'm open to, to ideas from, from around the state. If there's some suggestions on making something workable, I, I share some of Heidi's concerns about three feet, but I, I'm open to learning more and figuring out more.
Is this something that we could get done by August?
Yeah, let's, let's plan on having this discussion at your next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
The last thing that I would say about the ordinance, right, where is it? You come up with a larger, you make that setback and you are always are, are able to have a huge pool on that lot. Basically what you're saying is the larger you make that setback, the larger the lot you have to have. So you're both favoring the people in your community that are a large lot. Can't afford a larger lot, they'll be, I don't know how that would play into variance and yeah. Basically that one that says, yeah, you have the right to have a pool, there's nothing. It sounds like the right to have a pool, but the only ones that can have it are the ones that can afford a large, a lot, large amount of company.
The thing I want to say Tyler is thank you for requiring and asking the questions. I'm the little guy in the incorporated cabinet right now that built a pool without a permit. His contractor didn't pull the permit, he thought he did, took off on him, left him half done. And we're trying to figure out what to do with this hundred fifty thousand dollar investment, whether he's got to tear it out, start over, what to do, so these things can be really messy. So just, you know, thank you for inquiring and saying, what, what's possible? Um.
Well, I don't ask, I just, I want, I want to follow up though, but I think that's it. And I think that if you, if you want a pool, then I think you should be able to have a pool. And if it needs, I can see if anything goes into there, control panels, that's why you should be able to have them. It's no better than any other use.
Thank you, and if you feel free to send some of the stuff, you kind of, you, you referenced some of these different things. I'd love to, to see with some of those, I'd, I'd be happy to see some of those materials and then you guys kind of look into it and maybe, I, I, again, I just, I should be interested in, you know, any, any of the cities, some of their actual experiences of, of things that have happened or.
Yeah, that's what I'm interested in.
Just to, to see if there's a reason that we can kind of come into this range. And again, it, it's a fair point, sometimes we're just saying, well, they're good, and they're good, and so probably safe to be in, in between them, but to, to get a sense of if there's been occurrences that support that, that sort of length that we've adopted. Not, and it's worth checking in more closely.
And Tyler, thank you for all your research.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before I move to your decision. Uh, put a little bit of a long time out.
All right, thanks for talking. Can you, can you come to our August meeting? Uh, what day is it? Third, no, it's fourth or fourth Tuesday.
Tuesday. I can send you an email, Tyler.
Fourth Tuesday, the twenty seventh, I didn't know.
It's the twenty seventh? Are you sure?
Should be.
Yeah, six, thirteen, twenty, twenty seven, yeah, it should be.
Yeah, so it's.
All right.
Yeah, um, you, I, I mean, you're the interest department here.
Right.
Um, any information or research that you can come up with would be helpful for us to have too. So, anything that you can find, send us yourself.
Yeah, yeah, we'll.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you go with this.
Appreciate it, appreciate your time and again, thanks for your patience and getting into the meeting, you know, it's been a couple of months since.
Then, then what would be easier on the law is be that, would that be a decision on it or would it be? I don't know.
I think it's probably more of a discussion.
What we'd have to do, we'd have to do a discussion, um, and see if that's, that's the direction.
Right.
Or next meeting in September.
Yeah, change anyone, but we have to have public hearing.
So I'd have to, you know, documentation or.
Because between August and September, essentially that's when we would get our city attorney to draft something up for us to have ready to discuss with the public hearing. If there's anything I can say, we would have to be able.
Yeah.
If people are attached to the.
No, in fact, in, in that October one, we didn't have too many people. We had some people who were passionate about the lot line or the, how, how far the pool had to be built out, but um, it wasn't a big hearing, it wasn't the kind of people here. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. All righty, we'll go ahead and look forward to reviewing and approving planning commission meeting minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Uh, so did anyone have any feedback on any proposed changes, corrections, et cetera?
Did we ever send out the chicken or the survey thing, we never did that, right?
Never did.
Are we still doing that?
I was just hoping I just wanted to wait myself.
You're not trying to laugh?
I was just going to.
Chicken?
Everybody just kind of forgot all about it, like it just moved on and not worry about it, but it's still.
Well, we don't often, I mean, can we just pass something? Let it die or just pass something? And all the help of the work, I mean, I don't even have to be a surveyor. We've gotten a lot.
People still recently? Have not heard anything over two months now. Just kind of just, really quiet.
I guess in my mind.
Yeah, so I have not posted anything since I went really quick.
I don't know where, where we would be, we, we kicked a lot of numbers around back and forth based on square feet. Um, but we, we don't really have a, this one sounds good yet.
I mean, I, I think that it would, because I know there are a lot of people who are interested. I know in my larger neighborhood area, my district or whatever, each of us are over. Um, I know there are people who have interest and could express that interest. I, 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 I'd love to make a sense of what the actual community thinks, because people change. Yeah, because the people who kind of care about hearings, I don't think are always representative. In my experience. I, I don't know.
Where is, where are you?
Just let it lie.
Just let it lie, nothing or? I guess everybody's thinking about people are illegally having chickens, right? They're not, there's some basic issues.
Yeah, my, my sympathies, and, and that's why, you know, I appreciate Tyler, because Tyler is coming out on a pool issue before just going out and doing it.
Yes.
There's so many people that just go out and do it, there's the rule keepers, and that's the one who are trying to like accommodate this chicken ordinance. It's people saying, I'm not allowed to have this, I'm not going to do it.
Uh, because the people who are going to ignore the ordinance, like, they're going to build their pool regardless, right? They're going to do their things. So I mean, it would, it'd be nice to, to try and deliver something for those folks.
Yeah, since this, since we had all this discussion, were my neighbors. Not saying which one, we've got chickens. And, you know, it's been very interesting. I didn't know they were there until my grandfather told me they were there.
I don't know.
And now that I know they're there, I hear them once in a while. Um, they're not really noisy. Um, I would much rather trade chickens for the motorcycle that runs around, so.
I, I'd like to continue to look forward to progress on that one, because I, I know there are people who are kind of the rule keepers who have an eye out to see if we can get something there.
There are, and I, I do feel bad.
Do you want to do a survey or do you want to just, as a planning commission, come up with what you think it should be and then we just ask it?
You recommend a close lesson, I, I really like what you had brought up, Jeff, of the idea of. What did we say?
Conditional use.
Conditional use permit.
I really. I have a list of regulations, you approve it on a conditional use permit, and then when you don't, why? You can just say, that's out.
I mean, I know people don't like that, I think it's a weird addition, but at the same time, they're looking and sending a disclaimer to say, I know what I'm supposed to do, instead of like, I don't know that, oh, I don't know that, or.
Yeah.
I, I like that, I, I really like that approach because then for the bad actors, we can say, hey, this has been.
You, you have a way to deal with that, and you can deal with them individually.
Yeah, and, and most people, I think, I think, well, I don't want to say most people, because I think there are a lot of people who don't take care of their, but I think a lot of people who get chickens are the type who are, would take care of them. I've had two neighbors who had them, one lost them all to the fox on the golf course. The other one has lost half of them to the, to the fox on the golf course, but they're, they're very good at it. They have a very nice place for them, they take good care of them. My dog, whenever he hears them, he's always excited, wants to play with them, they got him a bag of carrots and corn, it's his favorite day of the year. But no, it was, it's been good, and I think there's a lot of people who are conscientious and will do that.
So do we need to survey and we turn that couple people?
I, I, I'd be happy to run with this conditional use permit idea.
Pass it, I just don't know if we're spurring the waters again, probably.
Right, that's a good point.
Probably be like.
I feel like that if, if nobody's screaming about it, maybe let it lie for a while, because I, I mean, there's still probably half of the city that legally can have chickens.
Yeah.
They, you know, we would, they may sound like that, you know, everything that's RS twelve.
And higher.
And, and higher can have, they can have chickens.
Right.
They've never been denied chickens. Um, I don't know how much of the zoning, I don't know how many people live in zoning that's less than, you know, the RS twelve that are begging for chickens, I don't know how many of these people are out there.
Well, could you? So my name is, is it all RS twelve?
Yeah.
Yes.
All of it?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, that's perfect.
Yeah, here's the map in front of you.
So Terry, this is, this is, yeah, yeah, we're all.
So everything in yellow is RS twelve.
Everyone's allowed to be there. Okay, because I got some people that live near Flow who were like, oh, no one can tell me you don't have chickens, like, literally, we can't, because you live in RS twelve. Um, I don't know, let's see, sorry.
But Flow is.
Oh, no, she's a.
Okay.
So like the people in the back nine, they're, they're the handful of who are interested, I know that much. And we decided we probably all agree, back nine is, R one two is right here, R one ten is dark blue here.
I'm not.
Dark blue. Um.
It's probably a third of the city that is R one twelve, R one ten.
Yes, R one ten, or R one ten, and then it's not a lot.
Maybe a quarter, maybe, it's probably more a quarter.
A lot of those.
Not all that.
Yeah, that's Tyler's. Yeah, I think there's enough, there's enough here of these R one tens, I feel like they should have their chance, like that, that seems reasonable. Did I say R one twelve or R one? What are the dark blues?
Where's the purple?
Those are R one ten.
Yeah, the purple.
What is, uh, what is Cherry Heights? What if there's R one eight? I think eight.
Yeah, the red one.
Okay, so that's the one where I would cap it at, I, I don't think R one eight should be able to, because that, like, has just, these houses two lots and it's just.
Build a house on the way you want to have.
And then the Four Mile Houses in Miami, they have plenty of room for pool.
Yeah, I don't, it's not like an argument. Now, what, I mean, pools are a hundred and fifty grand, you keep it cheap, so.
Unless you do that, I'd actually keep with this creative stuff with storage containers.
Oh, that's a.
Oh, gosh, now that would be a problem.
Oh, just wait, you know, people are looking on Pinterest, they're finding them.
They are.
But, um, so I, I, I do, so, so maybe, I, I think you were right, instead of doing the survey, it, my one concern is I want to make sure that city council isn't going to put kibosh on this idea of the conditional use permit, is there a way for us just to get their attention on that? Feel like, because that, that would be my idea, is let's run with Jeff's proposal, we have this list of requirements, they sign off on it and then we can make it if they're not.
An R one twelve.
R.
Ten is the smallest lot.
Nothing's smaller than R one.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't do so much.
I, I think, uh.
Or do you think there'll be pushback?
I think the pushback would just be mayor.
Does he want to have property?
He wants to say why it doesn't matter, I think that would be your pushback. I'm not sure about the whole council on that. Um, but the, but.
Because I know there was a lot.
But the mayor also doesn't vote, so.
There was a wider variety of things I felt like at the city council level. That's my biggest concern is if we throw something at them, they'll throw us back with a hundred yard lines. So I, I, I want to get a sense of, are we somewhat united on this vision before we throw it up to them?
So I know a lot of the biggest thing when we sat here with residents, they didn't want any kind of commitment, they think that was fair.
But chickens are dogs. I mean, are not.
I don't want permits for some dogs, that's weird.
Like, you don't have people with dogs that are cats, but chickens are not.
They do have that dog license.
Oh, the county, that's, that's true.
They do.
That is true. I do have.
Well, you're.
But I'm a rule keeper.
Well, we always have. I always assumed everybody else did.
I assume you're also a rule keeper.
Laws, there are ordinances for you, if you share that or chaos, I mean, everything was created because something bad happened.
Yeah.
And then something gets created, stops, and then it's back, right? So. I don't see a, I mean, a problem with the conditional, you think, you walk in, you fill out a piece of paper and.
Very straightforward.
Three or ten dollars, and you're basically just, just to see and know what you're reading to before you go start. Around off the chickens.
Um, I want to share with you just a perspective, story.
Sorry, I definitely.
On chickens, you did? So, I, I live on a half acre lot, and I've got two backyard neighbors that have chickens, and they have had it for several years. For whatever reason, I have been inundated with this stuff of my rats. Inundated. They're digging holes in my yard, they're digging holes into my rock walls, and, and I started seeing rats. You know, which I've never seen before. And so I got in, a guy over there looked at it, and he looks around and he said, they're rats. I said, what's digging these holes? And he says, it's rats. And I said, well, why now? And he says, they're expanding their territory. Why? And he says, chickens breed rats. He says, there's just no other events or butts about. And I'm not kidding you, we have made four big bags of rat poison have disappeared. We just keep putting it out and it keeps disappearing. I don't know how many there are, but we're, I'm thinking about going to the city and animal control and saying, this is, this is, my rights as property owner are being impinged out of it right now.
And that's why I think a permit is so important, because there are going to be bad actors that aren't, because I think, I think if you take care of your coop, you're not going to completely get rid of that nuisance, but you're going to reduce it. There's some people who just.
And you gotta keep it squeaky clean.
Yeah, it's going to cut stuff.
The rats eat the chicken poop.
Yep.
See, I'm.
We, there are. We've lived here a long time, and there are rats that come out of the orchards, and they're still there.
We have, we have a little stream in our backyard, and we have rats there because of that. I was cleaning out my stream, and I have a dead rat, and I had to wash my hands for a long, long time.
Nobody likes rats.
It's the worst.
But I think the conditional perm, use permit would be like, you're not taking care of your chickens, they're.
Gives the U through Heights the opportunity, a ton of the city saying, this is not an all pass.
Well, they have exit order, you. And then it's really something, but with that, we really have no recourse, right? I mean.
Once we, once we gain a permit like that, what if the, what if the city has a part of recourse? They just ignore you. Say, we pulled a permit, is there like ability to find?
Yeah, there is, there is, that's all, that's all.
That's why I would want some ability, some teeth to it, and I know that people are going to lose their minds about that, but, you know, just so that if someone is just looking at you ignoring it and the other people, that we can, you know, file a leave or something because.
That would be the same. It needs to be a little action.
Yeah, we could, we could.
Exactly. Okay, yeah, I'd like to get that moving again, but maybe, when is your next meeting with city council?
So, we have a tricky taxation, which is on the next, uh, sixth. That can be the only thing discussed at that meeting.
Got it.
So that's, that's our meeting on the sixth, so over the twentieth.
Of this month?
Of August.
Oh.
Our next council meeting.
Can you, can you just paint them on email and just copy us and just see if they're, what their thoughts are on that, because if we had that drafted up for August, I'd be happy to move that forward and bump it their way, but I, it's going to be fruitless if they're completely against it, right?
Is, is that a legal thing to do with the?
Oh, right, yeah.
I will ask them individually.
No, if he does that, I think we're good.
I can, I can ask them individually what they think of that.
Okay.
So I would, I would call each one of them individually.
And I'm just speaking, I'm sorry, are you guys generally open to this idea of the conditional use?
Yeah, R one ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think so. I'm with you. I think we want to put people into compliance or out of compliance, yeah, so we know.
Because I do think it becomes a health and safety issue at some point, so that makes sense to me. Okay, that was good. I thought that was the one to talk about. Oh, yeah, do we approve the minutes? That's forever.
Appointments.
No, we need a motion.
No, I need a motion to approve this from the June. I come in here in that New York.
May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth, for the twenty four me.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, on Taylor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I just had it. Uh, we'll move forward now our commission business. We were looking, and we had talked, after getting R one six put in place, we talked about looking at our map to determine some spots that would be appropriate for future for R one six. I'll be honest, I focused just on my little quadrant, just because I am more familiar there. I actually think there's good opportunity to be where I live, to just put some different spots. You know, currently we have, behind Cherry Hill, we have two kind of manufacturing home areas. If those were to ever change.
Well, starting, you know, like, when together, when companies are.
Starting to buy up those.
Buy a mound and put in.
That would be a really logical place for an R one six. I also.
No.
Oh, so it's, so if you go right behind your side of the sand, like these.
Think it's a commercial?
But in the master plan, the city is kind of.
It's all this.
Set that cherry hill area, that has future commercial area. Which is what it means in the city.
Yeah.
It's probably the highest and best use of the property.
What is it?
We're talking about cherry hill of the master plan that is called out as a commercial area.
But we're going up to the, you're saying even to the.
To the north of it.
Lower, that's literally where I live.
I'll have to both of those right now, it's not a commercial.
Yeah, and I am open to that as well, but if, if the feel more was for an R one six, I think I'd be more than happy to switch out, because it's a logical development to.
Well, just, I mean, it's not what happened with property on the street, it's no commercial, and it's in the. The north of the Davis Golf Course, right? That corner of his own commercial, and they could never get anything, but they're not some of those.
Where the, where the hybrid was?
Yes.
I, I, I found a guy for track to come in and zone a portion of the commercial, and.
I thought the front part was commercial, or it never was.
Never was.
I don't think it was.
It was agricultural, but when the first developer came in, they wanted to put the lower part commercial, and.
And then I, I think David Adams owns this, that, that big lot, right next to the condos. That's a real logical spot.
Yeah, that's, that's a good.
He's just doing a sample.
Yeah, just that big, dense lot between Cherry Heights and the condos, that, that one. I mean, if the condos ever want to get rid of their field too, that would be a perfect spot for it too. Um, so within my area, that, those were the few places that I thought, yeah, these are some logical spots.
The other one I thought that's just worth here of this church, okay, the church of the soul, there's the heights, but north of there. There's a bunch of older homes on NASA lots, but one is, one is.
Some law or some stuff like that?
Yes. I, to me, it's a great kind of area for small little town homes, instead of a, or a retirement, for town homes on, you know, that's a, that's gotta be five, six, seven acres there.
There, there are a lot of acres there, and I've thought about that area.
Or like eight, R one six, I don't know, whatever.
I talked to one of the property owners, and just casually talked about, you know, what's your, your thoughts, and it was absolutely, we're not doing high density.
And if they sell the property, then it's.
Well, that's right. And our, our plan, it talks about talking with the, the landowners and finding out.
But if they're older, they always have some mountain that they pass away, and then their children, whatever, it's, you know, just finding, finding out what they're.
But that does happen. Um.
Is that what you're saying?
It does happen.
You're speaking the truth we all know.
So, I mean, it just, that, but that's a great area of it.
I, I think there's other things that we really need to, maybe. The church property has really come to my mind too. We got this ball right over here.
Right back here.
On this one?
See, I have another one back up. Yeah, this one.
We've got this.
Right on our street.
Oh, yeah.
They're supposed to.
Well, we should look at that like we did the golf course.
Right, it's, it's a hit, right? The golf course is a big hit.
But like more of it there is church, I mean, these homeowners, most of them are older age. I would assume most of the children are not moving, and they're not considering selling. It's almost, I mean, it's all out of history.
Yeah.
Right?
So that, I saw that, because there's a lot of property there.
And they're. That's the Walmart, it's huge, they're back, have all the trees in front.
And there's, I mean, it's right on that, right, with access.
Yeah, it seems like a great area to do some higher density things there. Would you guys agree with that?
The neighborhood.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean they have to change the use of it. They all have property, and it's changing their use to extend in the future somewhere.
We're flagging to the concern of who's with a nice gentleman who kept coming for all the R one six discussions. It's to flag the people moving in that this is, this isn't where we think would be prime for these sorts of locations, and we would be willing to vote to, to switch that to.
Yes.
Um, it doesn't mean it's not going to happen, right?
No, I mean, like golf course, they have a whole beautiful planet.
Like.
I remember just saying the golf course.
That one is probably, I think that one is really way out there.
Yeah.
That would vote. The golf course is really popular.
It does take a lot to test you.
The golf is a bit more, the probability of it to change.
Well, we got that block, and then I think we ought to think about this beast right here.
What's, what's the issue here? Is that drainage?
Retention.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big issue.
Got it.
The judal, it's kind of, right?
The city owns that.
Oh, the city does?
Oh, the city, yeah, the city's getting in front of you.
Oh, the.
You were, I think you were about that, okay.
Or we don't.
But it's going to be a retention basis for.
I think that's a, it's a required.
Retention basically, there is.
From.
Um.
You're not going to finish those. It's ridiculous.
Thinking, and we've been here an hour and a half already. We could have a long discussion on this one evening. I think there are some small parcels, and we're to the point we need to really think what, what's out there that kind of has that maybe ought to be something we consider. And one thing to consider is, is people have come in and requested over the years, I mean, long time. They, they've come in and requested some developments, some smaller lots, and even smaller lots would help the situation. I, I think we ought to identify a few of those and, and say, okay, they've, they've come in, we've said no, is that really the right answer? One that I'm thinking of, there, what's her name up on, going up East Oaks on the right side, on the curve. She's got the big, the half acre lot, and her house is on one side. It's not enough to meet the current zoning, but there is room for a house there.
Tony Stokes?
Yeah.
On the corner.
That's, that's our premier.
Yeah.
The city.
Right.
She's, on this map, I think it would be three hundred and eighty eight on East Oaks.
Probably is a lot of numbers, because I talked about.
And if, I guess if we really want to show the state that we're making some efforts, we ought to look at people like that, and we've talked here about spot zoning. It will take some work to. Yeah, that's not it.
And so we're out on the side border. To your point, Clark, I think three hundred and eighty there on the curve on the right side.
Right.
It's flat too.
Yeah, she could.
It is a tough street.
Right, so.
But.
I believe, I think R one B, there's more. R one sixty kind of town on the side, I think you have to.
Do you guys think there's any appetite for identifying one of the larger vacant pieces of property to be considered?
I wish.
Like, like the Mannings, some of the Mannings property?
I.
Do you think there's appetite for that?
Here's my thought. I live in that neighborhood, and my neighbors may hate me for this, but I think where there's apartments on one side. If we say that next street next to the apartments would be a transition.
Yeah.
Area going from the apartments maybe to something in between. And then down to, to single family homes.
This is Manny Martin, right? Yeah.
Do you, do you guys want to kind of circle that out for us? Okay, over to you.
So this right here is Manny Martin.
Yeah.
All right.
But that, the right to the left is where the apartments are, right, on the street?
Well, that's Manny, you got pictures of that.
Yeah.
Right there.
Right here's the.
There's home, but then there's apartment on, on the south.
Yeah, that'd be.
How many acres does Mannings each right there? Doesn't have any on there. I don't know how big that is. Is that twenty acres maybe?
Oh, maybe it's a key.
Maybe, I don't know.
I mean, I'm assuming people further south, you want R one E? And then you can.
It's like a lot of different pieces.
There's four pieces there.
Right.
But it was all the families.
Here, these are apartments, you have some R one six, you see R one eight, and. And some of the.
That potentially.
I'm trying to tell me.
Yeah, there's already a lot of stuff on there.
I don't know.
All of that.
But yeah, that, oh, I don't, you wouldn't, you're not saying you just all of R one six, you some R one six and some R one eight, right?
Or even R, you could transfer, you shouldn't end up to, maybe.
We got thirteen acres right there.
I'd be open to the whole thing in R one six. And again, I, I started my little sector, so if anyone says, oh, you're trying to put it at R one six, it's like, no, I'm starting with my own, like, I think. The reality is, our city will not be able to grow and have new families in the future if they have nowhere to go. I could.
Because they're trying to help.
I, I wouldn't buy anything in here right now. I mean, if I was buying right now, I'd buy seven acres, I don't know, thank goodness I did, but like, you know, it could be really tough to try to buy something about homes in the areas right now.
Well, I, I tell you, we'll have a lot of opposition. We'll, we'll have a storm of opposition if we go the whole piece. Well, I I I tell you, we'll have a lot of opposition, we'll we'll have a storm of opposition if we go the whole piece.
And 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 I I I guess what I would do is, if if people are upset with that, that's that's fine, but typically, in each of the Mannings, you don't have all that area.
Yes.
So whatever kids, there're gonna be some at all at once and developer, I guess they, we could propose to them, how about you do this R one A, this R one six, but I I I think the more we can open up opportunities for multifamily and not so scary multifamily, for people with R one six. I think the better, because we're pretty built out and we don't have a lot of places and people aren't unwilling to do the R three, even though I think that's a great option for some some spots in the in the city as well, um.
Well, the, and one of the things we run into there is the Mannings live there.
Well, nothing can happen to them.
Uh, the the ones that are there are young.
Okay.
Yeah, you're looking another twenty five years.
Yeah, you could resell, right?
Well, we we would, we would put it on the plan.
Right.
And you're putting it here on your master plan.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, because the people who own it, they're like, no, we don't wanna do that, we don't wanna resell for you, so. I mean, it's it's a matter of setting any undeveloped lots uh, greater than X number of acres. Well, I mean, we 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 have to keep in mind.
But it's surrounding, yeah, it's surrounding, that's why we could do some R one six and then some R one A.
Right, so like, you know, like like you said, if 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 the church got rid of this, this is a very logical place because you have R one A right over here, like it 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 makes sense. It's logical, like, in my neighborhood, the it the all those spots I I pointed out, and then like hundred percent makes absolute sense to put that there, heck, I'd even bring in an R three for some of those, but my neighbors, they already don't like that, say the word multifamily, um.
I I wanna, I want you to just remember in your mind that we identified five things in our general plan that we were gonna work on as a city for affordable housing. And as Eric and I worked on the, our annual report to the Department of Workforce Services, we identified that that we believe we've met two of those five things. One was the creation of an ADU ordinance, the other was the creation of this R one six. Out of the three remaining, I think there's only one of those that we that we can realistically maybe accomplish. And that is what we're talking about right now, is that we would look at identifying areas in the city that could possibly be rezoned or higher density areas that could create more affordable housing. The remaining two are, one, reduce our impact fees, which is gonna be really hard for a small city. And the other one is create incentives for developers to do higher density, I think that's gonna be pretty difficult for our city to do too, so I think realistically, this what we're talking about is probably the only other thing that we might be able to do as a city and show that we've, you know, trying to make some steps. So I think we ought to take this seriously and and take a hard look and say, where do we really think that this is possible? And then look at modifying the general plan.
What is that intent?
Just going through a process to modify, we we did make a commitment, I believe, that that we will confer with the property owners. So if property owners say, I want nothing to do with it, then I think we move on. Um, and it doesn't mean it'll happen, it just says we've identified and we said, this is likely an area that we would look favorably of all. So I think we need to take it seriously and if we identify an area, I think you need to be prepared that, hey, this likely can go this direction.
So when you say move on, if the property owner says, I don't want anything to do with that, what do you mean by that?
We we just take it off the list.
Take it off the list.
And then somewhere in the future, um, he's a head office.
But but if we bring in the general plan, like, we don't, I mean, we.
You don't need.
We didn't wanna say this.
You don't need their permission to put it out on the general.
Is that, that's that's my my thought, is we're really just identifying, if there even came to us, we recommend it. We would say, sure, that that is a logical stop for you, but those people aren't going to come to us, they have no plans, right?
I I I think it's just smart to try and get as many people on your side as possible. And and we've had pushback in the past when we've, you know, planned things and people don't think they're a good idea, I mean, this is a polarizing issue. And and so, um, did the Mannings have a problem with that? I don't know.
The the only thing is that there's nothing believed in.
No, there's no.
So you're not changing with none of the.
We're changing, right?
None of it's.
When we updated the general plan before, you know, I know we got some feedback, but there's quite a few things on there that people were not happy about. And and the comment was.
And the golf course was one of them, having that sort of type of things, that was probably the biggest conflict to build.
The trail, the trail system, we got people coming. Yeah, I I am never, I am never granting that, he's been, like, fine, we're just saying, that'd be a great place, but.
Yeah, we're on the pro.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's a little right way passing right between me and my neighbor on the general plan. Nobody's been using it, even though I said, that's what I do one day, no one showed up to go through to.
I mean, you as a body, you have been asked to make land use decisions in this city, and so you could make that decision independent of a property owner, and it doesn't mean anything unless it comes to fruition. Um, I I just think that, I just think we should take it seriously and and really dig in and try and identify some things because I think realistically, this is probably the only other thing we could do as a city. So I I just wanna, I I wanna be able to say we made it on the step.
Would it be possible to have a, is it, does it work inside? What what do we need to do next? A working session or we sit down with the map, we all sit around the table and say, what about our just.
Just go right here to planning issue and we just set, that's what our our agenda would be, is that we are working on the areas where we would like to change for our general plan and we go through and set that and once we do that, then we have a vote here.
I don't think it's bad, but we adjust and if maybe each of you individually think about this over the next month and identify the areas like Kevin has done that you think, and then let's come together and talk about it and see if we can get a consensus uh, maybe, you know, draw some circles on the map.
Do you want us like, kind of like I did or I just focus, do you want us to focus on our, all of us are tied to a specific region, right? So it may, that makes sense because then, I think, we can all present it from the perspective of, I'm I'm not pointing to your neighbor and say, put it all over there. I'm saying, this is my neighborhood, this is where it could work.
And then I think once we've identified the areas that are possible, then let's have a discussion, should we approach these property owners to see if they're okay with this this idea? And then talk about whether or not we push this through a general plan amendment.
So the the one thing is, how do we approach these folks without them then saying, they're trying to change my zone, they came to me, they wanna change this, I'm like, how do we?
I I I can just just lay it out there and say, this is just conceptual, this is, this is, this is trying to meet affordable housing requirements that the state has placed on us. We're just, we've identified this property as a possibility, is this something that you would, you you would be okay with? And if they just, they may, they they may be cold to the idea, they may be warm to it, they may be hot to it. They may say, yeah, absolutely, this makes my property worth more money, they may say, you try this and I'll raise the whole neighborhood against you now. And 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 I think you take those things into consideration when you're making a decision. Because I think if somebody's just dead set against it, why raise their protest vote?
Cause I, you know, I'm thinking through this, right, a couple of areas I I identified are ones where it's not just like a A one, like one over, within a bunch of acres, this is, you know, folks over Appleworth is just saying, hey, if there was ever a desire, would you guys be open to it? So it wouldn't be less of a like, we need to go in there with your homes, what do you guys think about this? I'm just, I'm wondering, what's the best way to try to?
I don't know.
You're saying just that and would say, do not, this stuff, like make people not, right?
But we can vet that and and try and decide how is the best way to approach that.
You mean, is it like a, is it polling online or something? I don't know, is this?
Yeah, is it an open house? Where you can, you invite people in and talk.
Well, I think that's the way you do it, cause you're, you're talking about the general plan maybe.
So if they understand, they understand.
Why would we do it in a, to say, hey, here's something we're looking at, if you don't like it, tell us.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that, I think that is, otherwise, I think it's a little bit unmanageable, like, are we all, are we all gonna? Just tell them, I ain't here to ruin your day. Door to door, I've had doors slammed in my face, it's normal. Um, no, I I like the idea of an open house, just to continue this conversation, because I think instead of the general plan being a once every sixteen, twenty years to talk about it, just having this ongoing conversation that our community's developing, our state's developing, we need to keep up, there's some variety for it. They're gonna say, I hate it, I'm gonna get it here because it's a veteran community, it's single family, and say, that's great. Do you want all of your neighbors to, you know, just die out in their homes and nobody can move in and replace them? Do you want this to be Glendale, California, or like your neighbors live? Their closest young neighbors were, and they're succeeding, they weren't there, so I just.
And and I think this is important as well too, is that I anticipated when we submitted this annual report to the state that there would be some pushback, some kickback, or saying, you guys haven't done enough, or or this, they've said nothing. They've said nothing, which tells me that all they did is check the box, did we submit something? And so I think it was, it was good on our part to submit something, because they said, see, it's it about it. Now, that doesn't mean they still couldn't come back, but I think that right now, the state has been charged with, are people willing to do what we've asked them to do? And that is come up with these ideas about things that you can do. Whether or not, where you're gonna be forced ultimately to implement those things, I think that remains to be seen. Um, but it, it, I I I think that now that you've zoned a piece of property and you're gonna have a guy build a project and people will move into that project, you'll find out that these are the same neighbors that you'd like to be around and they might have some younger kids, I think those things will all owe, I mean, I don't know, but people that can afford a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar townhome, I don't see as somebody that's gonna run down the neighborhood. And that's just the reality that we face with the high property values in this area, it it it's really countywide.
Well, one thing that the governor's been pushing is to find ways that they can have individual ownership of a a piece of property.
They're saying that's the key now.
Even if it's small.
Yes, ownership is the key, that's their big push now, you've got to get people owning homes.
Yes, and and, you know, we have to be a little creative in how we do that, yeah, yeah.
There's just a lot of conversation, families that are shooting, like they're, I don't know, do you think, I don't know what they, but there's gonna be no real affordable housing in the city, right? They don't want what happened.
According to the state, we need to be selling houses for four hundred thousand dollars to meet the threshold, you can't buy the property, you can't buy the.
That's right, that's right.
Right.
So 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 that 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 seems to be a high on the sky thing, but I don't think that doesn't mean that we can't do some. I think that that, I think that that should be our monitor, is that it it's not, maybe not affordable according to the state's regulation, but it's more affordable than what the, than than a quarter acre lot might be. It's, I think we use that more affordable, it's not one point five million dollars, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, right.
I'm sure someone's a hundred forty thousand and a half, but. Maybe, or we're both arguing, we've been working full time now, so seven hundred and forty thousand, we're like, this is the dumbest decision we have ever made, I'm like. He's a fire, he's just, this is.
I'm not, I'm not selling cars, I need a, I would not wanna try and buy a seven hundred and fifty thousand. I just, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't cross stretch to that far, but that's what a lot of people are facing.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
And they're like, Max, you know, cool. Yeah. What's that in the picture?
So let's, let's, let's have a good discussion about this and and see if we can draw some circles on the map and then talk about the next step after that. Um, this is just, this is purely planning, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that it's going to come to fruition.
Right. Okay, um, any other thoughts on that before we uh, move forward? Okay, I think that does it then, uh, all surely one, looking out, so our next meeting is August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, um, but I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'm watching this.
Second.
Second.
All right, on paper, I, thanks, everybody.